I hereby call to the Roseville City Council meeting from Monday, May 12th, 2025. Mr. City Manager, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the dais, and city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who's on my left at the other end. We have other guests and staff who will be speaking at various portions of the meeting. We'll make those introductions at those times. Wanted to let folks know if you have a cellphone to make sure and silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And if you are interested in following what we're talking about this evening, we do have a public copy of the materials for tonight's meeting, which is available in a three-ring binder on the back table for members of the public. It is a single copy that has to be shared, so we're going to have to all work together here. But we do have individual copies of the agenda available, if you'd like your own copy of that, also on the back table. With that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. And as always, I'll check with staff first to see if there are any changes to our brief agenda this evening from a staff perspective.
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes to the agenda.
All right. Likewise, I'll check with city council members to see if there are any changes this evening that councilmembers would like to request. All right. And then a final quick check. We only have two items on our consent agenda, which is Section 10 at the end of our agenda. One is the approval of our payments, and the other is approving purchases over $10,000. Normally, these are taken up as a single motion at the end of the meeting with limited opportunity for public input. But if somebody is here to ask a question or make a comment about one of those items, this would be the time to let us know, and we'll pull that item forward in the meeting for you to not have to stay to the end if you're here on one of those items. So I'll do a quick check. Is anyone here for an item in Section 10 of our agenda, otherwise known as the Consent Agenda? It does not appear to be the case. Then with that, a motion to approve the agenda as presented would be in order.
So moved, second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. We will provide an opportunity for public comment as agenda items come up during the meeting this evening. But we also, at the start of each meeting by policy, do have an opportunity for general public comment. This is a chance for people to speak on items that may relate to city business or are of interest to people in the community but are not on this evening's agenda. If anyone is here to speak this evening under general public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, this would be the chance to let us know, and we'll recognize you at this time. Is anyone here for general public comment? All right. Does not appear to be the case. Then we'll move on with our agenda. Our first item under recognitions and donations, or our only item under recognitions and donations this evening, is an introduction of our embedded social workers. And I'll recognize our police chief, Erica Scheider, to make those introductions to the public, and in some cases, kind of a reintroduction too. So, welcome, Chief, and welcome to the social work.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. It dawned on me a couple of weeks ago when our two social workers were here for another item on the agenda that you guys had not officially or formally met them. So I wanted to come tonight and just do a quick introduction of our two social workers, Molly Slade and Amber Ruth. Just a little bit of background to our embedded social work program started in 2022, and really, we hit the ground running. We were able to use some ARPA funding and some grants, and with a partnership with Ramsey County and Peoples Incorporated, we were able to get this off the ground. And what we really realized is there's such a need for this program. And in addition, we kind of went to or looked at the next phase, and that was having our embedded social workers actually be city employees versus contracted employees. As we've talked about before, and you all know this, our country has a lot of challenges around mental health crises and the care that people receive or don't receive. One in five adults experience a mental illness every year, and about only half of those receive treatment. And so we're really trying to break that cycle. There is a lot of barriers. I know I've talked to the social workers about them, but we're really trying to do what we can here in Roseville to connect families and to connect individuals with that support. Right now, we expect our embedded social workers to have over 100 referrals every month, and those are coming from all different places. They come from our schools, they're coming from our police department, the fire department. Sometimes it's just people walking in to the police department looking for help. And I can tell you, I've talked to a number of those people, and they're so relieved when they can actually talk with a social worker versus just a police officer. And just two recent stories I want to quick pass along before I introduce them. We had a family that reached out to me directly a couple of weeks ago, and they had a family member who had early onset of dementia and was starting to have really aggressive tendencies. In the past, we kind of just wait, and eventually, police would probably be called. But because we've got this embedded social work program, we were able to connect the social workers with that family and put some things in place to hopefully prevent this from ever being a crisis or 911 call. Our social workers are also working on a couple of vulnerable or one particular one, a vulnerable adult in a group home that continues to wander away. And in the past, we just would keep going out as police, take missing persons report, find them. What we found is they've been able to build a relationship with that vulnerable adult and the staff and the family, and are now working on solutions. So hopefully, those don't become police calls, and also, we can have better care for that individual. So just some kind of different ways that we're doing things differently here in Roseville that I'm really proud of. So now the important part, actually, the introduction. I'm going to start with Molly Slade. Many of you know her. She was a Roseville resident and was formerly on the Human Rights Commission from 2014 to 2017. She was really inspired to get into this work after the Flando-Castile tragedy and really wanted to be part of meaningful change. And I will tell you, in the two years that we've had her embedded, there's some great progress being made on that. Molly brings over 20 years of experience with mental health, including a decade working with individuals with mental illness. She's got a Master's of Social Work from St. Thomas and has clinical licensure that she obtained in 2022. She's not new. As we mentioned, she was previously through a contract with Peoples, Inc., and we are just really excited that we were able to bring her into this new position and have her continue the work that she really started. So, super excited about that. And now a quick jump to Amber Ruth. Although Amber Ruth is new to us, she has a long history of this type of work. She's got over 20 years of community mental health work. She was a former embedded social worker with St. Paul's Coast Team. So doing a lot of the same work embedded in the St. Paul Police Department. She's got program leadership experience, community development, and has spoken at a number of conferences. And she also holds certifications in forensic social work, crisis de-escalation, and equine assisted learning, which I had to research a little bit about that. But she brings just a lot of community-centered intervention and experience. I just can't say enough how fortunate we are. It was a really competitive process, and we were fortunate to get two of the best in the metro area that just have an outstanding reputation. So I also want to take this time to also thank the council for making this happen. This has been something that we've talked about for a number of years, but to be able to have the support, the financial commitment to really make this a lasting positions has really taken all of your support. So it's kind of fun to see it finally coming, kind of, we made it. Didn't really know when we started where it was going, but without a doubt, the work that they're doing here is just unbelievable and really impacting members of our community. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'm sure they're willing to answer any questions or any comments that you might have.
Well, thank you so much for stepping forward to do that work for Roseville and wanting to serve our community in that way, and especially in the case of Molly with the long connection to the community. We really do appreciate the continuing interest in helping in that way. And I echo or I support the chief's analysis that this is making a big difference in our community for individuals, and really is doing what we hoped it would do and felt it should do, which is to really connect people with resources and allow law enforcement resources to be used for law enforcement purposes. And I think that's that we're seeing the fruition of that. And so I really do appreciate the work that you do. We know it's not easy. We know people are just like with law enforcement work. We're encountering people oftentimes in not the best times in their life, and it's just really heartening to know that people are able to be connected with what's going to help them hopefully get to a better place in their situation. So we, you know, once again, are just very grateful that you're serving in this way and that we have this to offer our community. So I wanted to say that, and I'm sure I'll be echoed by other councilmembers, but wanted to set the bar high.
All right. Well, I guess that's a hard act to follow. Actually, a couple of things I wanted to say was, one, it's very rare that I'm not out in the community that this whole thing doesn't come up. I'm really proud to be able to talk about this program that we have, because it's amazing, there's still a lot of people who aren't even aware of it. And so, and then when I talk about it, people are like, oh, wow. And so it's a great thing to be able to offer and then to get people to know about it. And the second thing is, I do know how hard it is for someone in crisis particularly to figure out how to navigate the systems to get help, because everything is very disjointed and trying to figure it out. And to have people to help navigate, even if you don't have a crisis, trying to navigate is very, very difficult. And so I really appreciate the hard work you're doing. And I do know that it's all about building the relationships, too. This isn't just you go in for five minutes and then move on, and this is something that you have to continually do. And I also know, talking to the chief and others, that some of our, you know, I think you just mentioned a few of them, the repeat people coming through, those being able to reach out and work with them and help them find the help they need and then feel safe in our communities. So I echo what the mayor said and just want to say thank you and welcome, and it's exciting. So, thanks.
Councilmember Strawn.
Thank you. And what I love about Molly is that every time you see her, she's she's just so excited to be here. It's really appreciated that. It's probably kind of a rare attribute in the police department to see someone. I just really appreciate the proactive approach. It's not uncommon that people reach out and say, you know what we really need in Roseville? And it's really nice to be able to say, we actually have that and more. And so I appreciate you joining Sean Johnson, Carrie McCullar, and part of that CAT team and all the work that they do there, because it is really invaluable, and it sets us apart as a community. And it's definitely a source of pride that, hey, we continue to have this thing that really takes care of people. And again, I just really appreciate the proactive approach. I worked at a nursing home, so, you know, I know that a lot of times it took a lot till they got to that point. And so it's really helpful to know, but not just seniors, but other folks in the community, children in the schools and other things that you bring. And so we are very honored to have such talent, and maybe we're going to have to have that horse come and tell us more about equine learning.
I was just looking, I'm curious about the 2026 budget.
Get the horse.
The Roseville horse.
Councilmember Graff?
I'm not going to repeat all. I totally agree with all those comments, of course. And of course, Molly, you've done such great work for the city, and I'm sure you will be too, Amber. But what I've noticed is when I'm on other boards or where there are other councilmembers from other cities, they're going like, how do you do that in Roseville? And they're so jealous of this system that we have in place. And they're also trying to figure out how to get it into their cities and reproduce that. And I noticed that when Representative Finke was here and spoke with you, and the CAT team and I came and sat in, how excited she was about it and saying, we've got to get this to other places, too, because this program should be around the whole metro area. So thanks for all your work. It's really encouraging.
And Councilmember Bauer?
I go with my fellow councilmembers have stated, also very excited to have you join. And hopefully, this will be the first of many visits. Looking forward to gaining feedback as well, how we can make this great program, as we noted, even better. You know, challenges, problems that we have are not stacked, they change over time, the needs change over time, the dynamic is there. So encourage you to bring that forward to us and see if we can continue to improve this program.
Any final words from the folks who are introduced this evening, just to maybe start the feedback process?
Give us a chance to ask.
I just had two thoughts, because of course I do. But one, what I love best is the stories that you don't hear about, you know, things that we're able to step in that won't become headline news. And I just keep thinking about, and that resonates with me, because what, one of the things I love about this is that we can be proactive, and we see it coming. And if, you know, not always, but to be able to, before it even becomes a story and no one knows, and we're like ninjas going out and hopefully helping out. And once again, like, I have been involved with the city, and to watch this come to fruition is, I don't know if I would do it for any other department. It's just, it's an amazing department from the top down. It is not box checking, and I just, I appreciate that.
I just want to say thank you for having me, and I'm excited to be part of this journey.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again, and now back to work.
I'll go start working on that horse.
Thanks. All right. Well, with that, I guess we've got to do our business now this evening, so we'll switch gears a little bit here. And speaking of budgets, our first item under our business items this evening is to receive our 2024 audit. And we've got our finance director, Michelle Petrick, with us, as well as our representative from Red Path, Rebecca Peterson, who was involved in the audit process and is here to present this evening. So I know I've made those introductions now, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Petrick to repeat that.
Well, you took my thunders. We're required to have an audit by statute, and we choose to have an audit because we also submit our annual comprehensive financial report to the Government Finance Officers Association. And we have continued to receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So with that, I will turn it over to Rebecca Peterson, Managing Director for Red Path, to explain the audit results and answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm going to go through a summary of the reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit. If you've read the reports of the past, you know that they are full of templated standard language, and so I'm going to try and draw out just the key points that you need to know. The first report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is the opinion on the financial statements. And this is the primary purpose of an audit. It's the reason that you, as city council, hire us. And it's to review or audit the financial statements that city staff prepare and provide our opinion on the fair presentation of those statements. It would be cost and time prohibitive if we looked at every single transaction that the city entered into, so we look at them on a sample basis sufficient enough to provide an opinion on the statements. Our opinion this year is a clean, unmodified opinion that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, not that they're exact to the dollar, just that they're fairly presented. It's the highest level of assurance we can provide, and in short, it's the result you want from your audit. And here is the certificate of achievement that the city received last year on your 2023 financial statements. And the 2024 statements will be submitted to the certificate program as well, and we believe you'll receive the award for those. The next report we issue in conjunction with the audit is a report on internal controls. As part of the audit, we don't audit the city's internal controls, but we gain an understanding of the processes and procedures that are in place. And if anything comes to our attention that we think warrants your attention as governance, or there's anything that we're required to report to you, it would be reported in this report. This year, there's one finding reported for audit adjustments. This is the type of finding that auditing standards obligate us to report. Anytime that during the audit process, an adjustment to the city's books is identified that crosses our materiality threshold, we have to report it as a finding. It's an extremely common finding for cities to receive. And this year, there was only one audit adjustment that crossed the threshold for reporting. And it was related to some loans receivable that the city's obligated to collect but weren't currently reflected on the city's books. It was not the city's source money. It was from a different governmental agency that the city is simply responsible for collecting. So the financial statements were adjusted for that, and that was the only audit adjustment of significance this year. The next report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a report on Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor asks us as auditors during the course of our audit to look at certain legal requirements. They have a series of seven areas that they like us to look at, and I always qualify that with, we are not attorneys, we're accountants. And so we're looking at this from an accounting perspective. We're looking at things like, does the city have sufficient collateral for your cash deposits? Are you investing city funds in investments that are allowable by state statute? We look at conflicts of interest, bid laws, those types of things. This year, there were no instances of noncompliance that came to our attention that warranted reporting in the reports. So no findings this year, which, again, is the result you want. The next report that we issued in conjunction with the audit this year is a report on federal program compliance. Anytime the city spends more than $750,000 of federal funds, you're obligated to get a federal compliance audit. And so this doesn't happen every year, but with recent COVID funding, you've had one for several years in a row. This year, because of the ARPA funding, we were required to have the audit. We audited for compliance with the program requirements that the federal government asks us to, and there were no reportable instances of noncompliance and no question costs identified during our audit. So again, that is the result you would hope for. The final report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a communication to those charged with governance. It's a several-page letter, again, full of standard language. I've just called out a couple of key points here. One of the items that we're required to communicate with you is any changes in accounting standards. There are new GASB standards that the city is obligated to follow every single year. This year, there is a new standard on compensated absences. The city considered it and implemented it, but it didn't really have any significant impact on the city's financial statements. I always like to remind you that there are estimates within the financial statements. If you look at Statement 1 to your financial statements, you'll see some large liabilities on there, both for net pension liability and OPEP. OPEP stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are actuarially determined liabilities that just represent the present value of future costs that the city may be subject to. They are not liabilities that you're going to have to pay next week, next month, next year. They're just representative of future items that are out there. If we had any disagreements with management during the course of our audit, we would likely be communicating with you before now. But it's one of the pieces that we're required to communicate in this letter. So I'm pleased to report no disagreements with management during the course of the audit, no difficulties encountered during the course of the audit. And I do want to say, you know, with some recent staff turnover in finance, the ability of the finance team to get the audit done on time and on schedule was greatly appreciated by us, but also impressive that that was able to happen. No other significant matters came to our attention during the course of the audit, but if they had, we would be communicating them in this letter. Next up, I have some high-level summary financial information. First up is some summary information about the city's governmental funds. As a reminder, or if you're not familiar, the city has two types of funds. There's the business-type funds that are generally intended to be self-supporting, and there's the governmental funds that use grants and property tax revenues to sustain themselves. By fund type, I have a schedule here of the revenues, the inflows, the expenditures and other outflows, transfers between funds, and ultimately, the change in fund balance. You'll see the type of fund that had the most significant change this year is down at the bottom, the capital project funds. One column over from the left, you'll see that fund balance changed about $2.4 million. That's really coming from two different sources. There was some public safety aid that was transferred into a capital fund to fund some capital purchases. And also, there was some TIF revenue coming into one of the increment funds that exists now but will be paid out to developers in the near future. So you'll see an increase of $2.4 million in fund balance, but I just want to point out that those funds are committed and restricted for specific purposes. Next up, I have a summary of the general fund fund balance. And you can see there were variances throughout expenditures and transfers, but at the end of the day, the net change in fund balance for your general fund was $120,000 reduction compared to a budgeted $114,000 reduction. And it's hard to get much closer to that on budget. So overall, positive results in the general fund.
Just to add to that?
Yeah.
That is the general fund only. In the audit report, there's the general fund, which is the general fund plus three or four other funds that get combined. So that chart is just for the city's general fund.
The next up, I just have a comparison of the city's general fund fund balance, especially as you head into the '26 budget cycles. It's important to be aware of. The city needs to maintain reserves to fund future operations, to fund cash flow. Your property tax payments come in twice a year, and you need to have enough cushion to get yourself to the next payment. You need to have enough cash on hand to fund unexpected expenses. And so the city has a fund balance policy that you're going to target to maintain between 35% and 50% of the next year's expenditures within fund balance. This year, after year-end closing entries were made, you're at about 38.4%, which is at the low end of your policy, but still within a healthy range. And finally, for government funds, I just have a trend showing the types of revenues that are funding your operations in governmental funds. You see that big blue bar at the bottom, that chunk, that is property taxes and assessments. So that is the most significant funding source for your governmental funds. And then you've got some charges for services and intergovernmental revenue, making up the majority of the rest of the difference. And then miscellaneous fees, licenses and permits and whatnot are making up the rest. But most significantly, your property taxes, charges for services, and intergovernmental revenues are what are funding your governmental operations. Next, I have some trends for your business-type funds. First up, we have water fund operations. And this is looking at operating expenses and operating revenue. So if you look at that bluish bar, that's the expenses for your fund, and the dark red line is your operating revenue. Within your business-type funds, particularly your utility funds, you really want to make sure that that operating revenue is covering your operating expenses with a gap. You know, capital for your utilities is quite expensive, and so you need that gap between operating revenues and expenses to save for future capital acquisitions. If you look back at '21, '22, your operating revenue was not quite covering your operating expenses, but I think there's been some utility rate studies and other work done to try and build that gap. And then I wanted to point out water fund cash flows. The water fund has struggled for a couple of years maintaining cash balances. This year, there was a cash transfer into the fund to help with the refund of some of those deposits payable, which I know the council worked through. And if you look at this table, lower right-hand number, cash balances at the end of 2024 were over $2 million. And that's the healthiest that the fund has been in a number of years. So it's moving in the right direction with some positive cash flow. Next up, I have the sewer utility fund. And you can see here that gap between your operating revenues and expenses over time is much healthier than the water has been. It maintains that gap for future capital needs. Next up is storm drainage operations, and this one tends to fluctuate. I know that there was a utility rate study done that impacted the rates in here to try and build some cash reserves. And you can see that operating revenue is trending up. My understanding is it's something that's going to be looked at during the 2026 budget cycle to make sure that your fees are at the right level here. Next up, I have golf course operations. You'll see two different shades of blue here. The reason for that is that darker blue represents true operating expenses within the fund. The lighter blue reflects depreciation, the, you know, book expense of having capital assets. And I called it out separately because that operating revenue- And I called it out separately because that operating revenue is, in some years, struggling to cover operating expenses. Recreation funds are notoriously hard to maintain themselves. Oftentimes, when capital needs exist, transfers in are required. But I will mention that part of the 2024 operating expenses is some actuarial adjustments from those actuarially determined liabilities I mentioned earlier. They are impacting the expense number there a little bit, but still operating revenue not quite covering expenses. And finally, solid waste recycling. This is one that you can see the expenses tend to move a little bit over time, just depending on the timing of services and whatnot. But if you imagine a trend line of your expenses over the years, your operating revenue is covering expenses generally. You'll see there's two lines there. The red is true operating revenue, and then that blue line includes grants. The city has an annual grant that helps cover some of the expenses within the fund. So over time, covering expenses. And that's all I have pre-prepared for you today, but happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, and of course, all the work behind the scenes in the auditing process. We'll open it up for council questions. Councilmember Schroeder.
They always tease me because finance is my background, so they tease me about this.
Just a couple of questions, because a lot of my questions, the finance director was very helpful in answering a number of things before the meeting. So just talking about the internal controls, do you look at things like new vendor processes? So as we know, new vendor is one area where scams and fraud can happen. So do you actually get to that level of looking at those kind of processes?
We do review of controls over vendors on a cyclical basis. And so we have different things that we look at every year. You know, one year, we might look at this component of the process. Next year, we look at this component of the process. But conversations around that is something we emphasize heavily during both our audit planning meetings and our off-cycle meetings when we meet with the city staff year-round, because as you indicate, that is a significant risk to local governments especially, because so much information is available right on your website and in your board packets. And the best defense against that is awareness and continually reminding staff how important it is to question things and be aware. So we do look at it during the course of our audit, but it's also something that we talk about year-round with city staff.
And then, how many do the field work from your organization?
We, let's see, this year, yeah, this year, I think we had four staff onsite. We do a hybrid approach where we do some audit work actually out at the city, and then we do some from our offices, just depending on what's most efficient for what we're working on. But it's generally myself as the audit signer, and then there will be a manager, a senior, and one or two staff on the audit.
So then, does one of the partners review it before it gets finalized, or are you the last?
Yeah, my title's managing director, but I have signing authority over the report.
That wasn't clear on that one, so thank you on that. And then, how many years has Red Path been doing the audit?
We just started a second contract, so I want to say.
Four.
Because they're three-year contracts, I believe.
Three-year contracts, yeah.
So this would be the fourth year?
I think it's more than four years. I actually do not know.
Remember.
In full transparency, we, Roseville, when they first came to Red Path as a client, Dave Mall was the engagement partner, and he has since retired, and I've moved on to the engagement, which is why I don't have that institutional history of how many years. But I want to say somewhere around six would be my best guess.
Mr. Treger.
I don't know the exact number, but I know, first of all, we have a policy for professional services every three years. But I know we purposely look to go to different auditors over a period of times. We have another set of eyes looking at it. I think this is maybe Red Path's second or third cycle from here, since I've been with the city over the years. So that's something we always want to look at, make sure we have different sets of eyes.
Yeah. We actually did do the RFP since I've been here, and I've been here five and a half years. And so they're in their second round of, it was a three-year plus an extension of three. So less than six, more than three.
And then, this is, I know our finance chair is sitting in the back there, and so my question is, when are you going to be presenting to the Finance Commission? And is that presentation different from this one?
Tomorrow. And we will use the PowerPoint from tonight as the basis for that conversation. We just tend to get into a little more detailed questions during that meeting.
Okay, because, yeah, I'm sure they probably appreciate the detail a little bit, getting into the granule than at this level does, so I appreciate that. But then, some of my other questions you actually answered, so thank you for actually presenting it, and I'm looking forward to see what the Finance Commission has to say, too.
All right. Other questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I was wondering if you could expand a little bit more on the sampling that you noted about to test some of these counts to ensure the numbers you received are valid numbers.
Yep. So we use a variety of sampling techniques. When we do the federal compliance audit, the federal government has specific sample sizes that they like us to use, and so we follow specifically those sample sizes. And the sample size will vary depending on the population that we're testing. General rule of thumb for small items is we might look at 10% of the transactions. For larger populations, we might look at 25, 40, 60, just depending on the risk involved in the area and the population that we're looking at. During the financial audit, it's similar sampling guidance, but we have a little bit more freedom within our testing to really look at the risks involved in the areas we're testing. And we use larger sample sizes for transactions in riskier areas and smaller sample sizes for transactions in less risky areas. And so it's hard for me to tell you exactly the size of the samples we look at. We follow the AICPA guidance, and 10% is a general rule of thumb for small populations if you're looking for perspective on numbers.
And this is across all accounts or a selection of accounts?
Um.
Or funds?
Or funds. We audit the, I'm trying to think how I want to explain this. We look at the funds as a whole. So when we're auditing, you know, let's say we're auditing cash, we will look at cash spread across the city as a whole, but the materiality for different funds is different. And so we will use a materiality threshold appropriate to what we're testing. So for example, if there is special assessment revenue in one fund that has a low materiality, we will use a low materiality when testing special assessment revenue. If there is a type of transaction that's only in the general fund, and the general fund has a higher materiality, we'll use materiality appropriate to that fund. So the materiality scales a little bit depending on what fund we're looking at, but we do look at transactions across the city as a whole, not funds individually.
Thank you. And just to clarify one point, when you talk about a population, you're talking about a number of transactions.
Exactly, yes. Yes, yeah. Not people. Unless we're looking at utilities, then maybe.
Right, right. Councilmember Groff.
Thank you for the report. And as I was mentioning earlier to you, I read several of these every year for different organizations I'm on the board for, so a lot of the language is very familiar. But I think the thing residents want to know is, of course, that it's audited and that it's by a reputable company. And they don't really go into the details that we do, reading all of these things, but they like to know that part. The thing that's really helpful for me is that this helps us early in the budgeting process, so we can look at things and see where the gaps are and where we might be looking forward to the next budget and making some adjustments, and that helps us with our planning. So thank you.
And just to add to that, I think it also helps sometimes with our policy adjustments based on what we're hearing as feedback in the audit process. So that's a helpful part of this as well. And I did want to just go back to the question about the contract and the term. I think under, for the members of the public, I think our policy is generally a three-year term for professional services contract. There is an option typically at that point to look at sort of extending or continuing, and it's sort of, it's an opportunity for, to look at how the performance was, and then typically, if things look good, the city manager may recommend going ahead with another three-year term, depending on the specific legal part of the agreement. But then our policy, you know, tends to want us to, after two three-year terms, look again at that RFP process. Sometimes, things are more frequently done that way, just depends on the service that's being provided to the city and the history of that particular service. But that just provides the members of the public sort of a general idea of what we're talking about when we're talking about these professional services, not necessarily specific to auditing, but more broadly, just maybe to help folks understand that. And anything I said wrong, I must be tr-.
Well, actually, the purchasing policy that was approved has the automatic, first three-year, automatic extension to three years if satisfactory performance that you approved a few years ago.
And I could be referring back to older policy language from back in the days, you know, when I first started up here.
But the other thing, when we, because I've been in this business long enough that I know when you switch audit firms, you really spend the first two years with the audit firm, having to spend more time, more hours to get familiar with the city's policies and procedures. And so generally speaking, six years is when you get the best return on your investment, so to speak.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
I want to make a comment noting, you mentioned that this will be given to the Finance Commission, I believe, later this week, or?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. I encourage you to go, you know, feel free to continue the presentation or go deeper. We definitely look to the Finance Commission to dig into these, this audit and provide feedback to us, and we'll be able to act on that, and we'll use that. So definitely encourage you to go longer or deeper into this, as we will be looking to them to get more information to us.
And sometimes their questions get deeper, don't they?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you again. I believe, do we have to take an action to accept the?
Public comments?
Oh, you're right. I apologize. I was just double-checking what the action was required. We do need to accept the 2024 report, financial reports, but let's do a check to see if there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time regarding our audit. All right. And certainly, we make all this information available. Our financial reports are available to the public on the city's website going back many years, as well as budgets. And so there's lots of opportunities to check our finances for members of the public who are interested in particular areas. And I know Ms. Petrick and her staff are more than happy to answer questions, as the public has them, about the city's operations as well, and we appreciate that. So thanks again. If there's no other, if there's no one from the public who wishes to speak, we do have the request for a motion to accept the 2024 city financial reports.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Schroeder, right, as the secondary, Councilmember Groff. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We've got the motion before us to accept those 2024 financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and those reports are accepted. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our second item this evening on business items, and that is to consider a conditional use request associated with a apartment development being proposed on, off of Snelling, north of County Road C. We'll say that, and we can get into more specifics. And with us this evening, we have our senior planner, Brian Lloyd, with us to introduce this to the council for our consideration after following up on the hearing at the Planning Commission earlier. Mr. Lloyd, welcome.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is an application for conditional use approval, and we'll get into the sort of details of that in a moment. The location here is 2940 Snelling Avenue, between County Road C2 and Lydia there on the east side of Snelling. And the proposal generally is to redevelop this site, which has been a medical office building for, I mean, the structure itself is some 50-odd years old. And it's in a stretch along Snelling Avenue there that has, over the years, been guided and zoned for multifamily uses mostly. And many of the properties along this stretch of Snelling Avenue have indeed been developed as apartments in that time. And the high-density district that regulates this property in the zoning code allows for a standard density limit of up to 24 dwelling units per acre and allows applicants to seek approval of up to 36 units an acre under this conditional use review and approval process. The proposal here is essentially just to get two extra dwellings above what the standard limit would allow here. So from, I believe it's 16 units that they could get under the 24 units an acre density, they're seeking approval for what would be mathematically 28 units per acre or 18 total units there. As was mentioned, the public hearing was held by the Planning Commission. It was unusually long ago with respect to when the city council meeting is. That was back in early March. But there was a lot of discussion at the public hearing about the other apartment properties, you know, especially further south that are now, or that have been acquired by the owner of this property and have been kind of incrementally updated and approved and invested in. And the property owner was unavailable to be at that public hearing, but we scheduled the city council's review this evening in case there were further conversations about those other properties that council or the public wanted to engage in, and the property owner would be here for that, for those conversations. Beyond that, I would really just end what is a pretty cursory presentation with our recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the conditional use request, allowing that 28 unit per acre density, with the one condition of adding a pathway easement along the western side of the property there, a five-foot easement for the future construction of a path at some point when more easement can be acquired along there. This seems to be a pretty common street for particularly students over at Northwestern to park along and then walk over to school rather than parking on campus. So the pathway easement would be adding, you know, a pedestrian facility along the street where there isn't presently one. So that kind of explains the condition that we're recommending. And aside from that, I can end the presentation and see if there are questions that I can answer for you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Questions from the council? Councilmember Strawn.
Thank you. On the very bottom, it indicates an existing two-way traffic at the property line. Is that specifically for these apartment dwellings, or is that a public road? When I look at the prior map, I see, I don't see it extending into the other residential.
So that two-way aisle that you noted is essentially the parking ingress and egress that has been built for the apartment to the south, which is owned by this same owner applying for this approval. And the zoning code allows for adjacent properties to share parking facilities, to be able to, you know, use circulation and even share stalls across properties, you know, if there's enough stalls and access for both of those properties or all of those properties to take advantage of. And so the proposed apartment, you know, has a main parking lot ingress on the north side of the site, and cars can come around and, you know, can either circle back and park in here or use some stalls that will be available, you know, shared stalls further south, you know, not on this plan any longer, and then being able to exit back to Snelling along the south side there.
So that's not the only in-and-out space, is in that two-way? Well, there's the in here, but is that, that's not the only way out?
It's the only vehicle exit for the property.
Is there maybe a further exit further south on the southern property?
Yeah, and that may be true, and it's not showing on even the sort of larger view here, but, right. The single, the single egress, you know, that shows up on the sort of main site plan that's with the packet this evening, isn't an issue for staff. You know, the zoning code in the parking regulation certainly allows for one-way drive aisles with angled parking stalls, which would typically lead to one way in and one way out of a parking lot.
Yeah, I think the part, how many homes, how many apartments are in the southern section of the dwellings that would be the complete? The rest of Lydia Rose.
I'm not sure how many dwellings are in the other apartments for the south.
I just was wondering about those parking spots that are abutting the building, and they're at a 90-degree. Just wondering about the safety of those going out into that two-way traffic, if that's the only egress and ingress to the main traffic there, if all the residents in that area are coming and going from that, and someone is attempting to back up in that area. Just wanting to make sure that that's a safe place to have a. area. Just wanting to make sure that that's a safe place to have a handicap spot, an EV spot, places, you know, someone in a handicap, that might be the only place, is that a safe place for them to be if their vehicle is more difficult to see around and things like that?
The same sort of parking that's on the south side of that two-way is straight, you know?
Yes. And the drive aisles and parking lot dimensions generally would conform to the standards of the zoning code.
Could you go back to that other one? Because I think it was, my question was that it's on the property line and it butts the property line.
There we go.
So, yeah, just there, that, right up to the, parking goes all the way right up to the property line?
Yes.
And that those are at a 90-degree angle to?
Yes, those are.
Yeah. And so if, you know, 200 cars are coming and going only from there, is that the safest way that those, should those be also at a 45-degree angle? Obviously, you would have less parking there, but maybe that would be safer for someone to exit from that spot. I'm just making sure that that is considered, if that's the only way that people can get back out to East Snelling Drive.
It may be the most convenient egress back out to Snelling, but the parking lot dimensions for the 90-degree stalls here would be the same as, you know, as standard in every other parking lot that might be busy and have ADA stalls and EV charging places, and lots of traffic at times. So I suppose there's always some risk in driving around a parking lot, but the implementation here would be, you know, up to the same standards as elsewhere.
And then just one other question. Does any of this redevelopment of this, if we were to approve it, trigger EV redevelopment in the rest of the complex?
No, not in the rest of the complex. Conceivably, at some point, when the parking lot, you know, when the surface parking areas of the other apartment buildings are substantially redeveloped, then our EV requirements for those properties would kick in. But, and EV requirements would certainly apply to the proposed apartment here and within the property, or within the sort of stalls that are both in the property and being shared. You know, there's a couple of shared stalls that are kind of accruing to this property as well. And in that required number of stalls, there is a minimum number of EV parking requirements that coincide with that. They will be implemented here and others would be implemented when those sort of thresholds are crossed for those properties.
Yeah, I guess I do have one more other question. So is, I don't know if there's been any consideration to anything other than just surface parking. I know our recent other market development had underground parking. Does this impact the permeable surfaces allotment that this building would have by having that much surface parking?
The site, as it's shown on the plan here, does conform to the, I think it's a 75% coverage limit in this district. And there is no underground parking. That is the topic of significant conversation at the public hearing. You know, there was members of the Planning Commission that encouraged the exploration, the further exploration of underground parking. That is something that the site designer evaluated as a possibility, and the small size of the building and limited sort of approach distance made it unfeasible and practical to implement that here.
Do you know what the expected square footage of these two-bedroom units is?
On the plan here, it indicates they're about 1,000 feet, 1,036.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Groff?
Just a comment. I read in the notes that there would be screening or there is screening for headlights.
There is probably today as a function of the existing apartment building that's been there. But as the site is redeveloped, yes, there are screening requirements, particularly as it pertains to, you know, what would be the eastern side of the site facing the lower density residential uses behind there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
So reclassifying this, could you state once again what the maximum number of units could be on this particular parcel?
Under the standard density limit in the high-density district, the maximum is 24 units per acre. The conditional use approval process that we're engaged in now can allow up to 36 units per acre, and they're seeking 28 units per acre.
And the parcel size, this parcel size is?
About two-thirds of an acre, I think.
Two-thirds of an acre. And I saw there's a note here from Ms. Lowry noting a city right-of-way permit is required. Is that still necessary, I mean, in the future? And if so, roughly, where, what is that for?
That's generally going to be for work that's done on the utility services and the parking lot access, having an agreement for, you know, cutting into curb lines, restoring curbs, making sure that roadways are, you know, after the disruption is over from construction, that they are kind of restored to the standard conditions.
Okay. So there's no, the standard permit that we would like to, you mean?
Yes. Yeah. That's a standard comment from the city engineer.
Right. Councilmember Schroeder, do you have a question? Right, Councilmember Strong?
I was just curious if Community Development Director Gunlock or Mr. Lloyd could speak too. We had, in our housing study, we had said how many two-bedroom multifamily units we were short. I don't know, maybe that's, you know, where, because there, I know that two-bedroom multifamily units have been something that we've been a bit undersized on, and just wondering how many we are short and if this, obviously, this would help to contribute to any shortage that we may have identified.
I don't know the exact numbers, particularly with respect to two bedrooms, but certainly, you know, the, both the existing housing needs assessment from several years ago and the current update, both would indicate that there is market capacity for these units and more. And the units that have been coming online, you know, in recent years have been, have been leased up fairly quickly, so it seems like the demand really is there and it's not just a function of estimates in a study.
All right.
Any other questions?
Absolutely. That's what we're here for.
This is maybe more for the owners of the building, but how would the pricing of this particular apartment be, if this is looking at market rate? I don't know that those other buildings are currently at market rate, and is it going to substantially change the rental rates of the other buildings that are adjacent to this?
And we can follow up with an opportunity?
Yeah, it would have to be for them.
Thank you.
For the applicant to speak. I did have a question, a couple of questions. Are there currently any other pathway easements existing along that stretch of the Service Drive?
I don't believe there is. This would be kind of the first.
And obviously, it's five feet. The point there is not that we use five feet to make a pathway, but we need the additional width as opposed to the existing right-of-way.
Right.
All right, thank you. And then second, I'm trying to remember, on shared parking, is that a private agreement between properties? Is there anything that's filed with the property, say at the county or anything like that, when there's a shared parking agreement?
I don't remember the provisions.
Just thinking, because a lot of times, people use that as a means to meet parking requirements. And I'm just wondering if, you know, if the agreement goes away, if people, you know, can't, obviously, it's the same owner, so it helps. Hopefully, they can stay in agreement with themselves. But, you know, going down the road, if there's a change in that situation, how does that impact when we're trying to make sure that we've got adequate parking?
I don't remember what our zoning code says as required documentation, but certainly, you know, these shared parking agreements are easements, formally speaking, which would have specific, you know, areas of a site that, you know, the users of one property are allowed to sort of access on the other. How many stalls perhaps are part of that shared agreement? And I would expect that to be part of an easement that is reported at the county, whether or not the zoning code specifies something like that as a requirement.
Right. Yeah, and I wasn't sure that we specified it, but I was trying to remember how that was accounted for. So I appreciate that. It does appear that the building to the south does, I think, have underground parking, if I look at the aerial photograph, unless that's just an area that has access for trash pickup or something. But anyway, that's a kind of a moot point.
I believe that's right.
All right. I do want to provide an opportunity. If a representative of the applicant wants to speak to any of the questions that have been asked this evening or has anything else to say in support of their application, this would be an opportunity. Add your option to do that. All right. Do you have any additional information as to how that might affect the market rate rents of other buildings?
Kathy, why don't you get them up?
And we just ask you to introduce yourself as you start your comments.
I'm Dennis Hummel, the owner, primary owner, and my son back there is also part owner.
Have a seat. Make yourself comfortable.
And this is Kathy Kenny. She's our property manager, and she can address the rental issue because she is pretty much involved with that.
So the entire community that we have is market rate, so it would be just a little bit elevated. There's such a demand now for two-bed, two-baths. We have two-bed, one-bath, and especially with the colleges so close by. We thought it would really provide some very needed housing to service that. And as far as the parking goes, there is an underground parking garage right next door that certainly can very easily be utilized by this building. And that back area where it goes to the right behind the building, behind the middle building, which is our longest building, they can go straight out and they can go out at the very end, or they can turn right at the edge of that building between the buildings and go out. So there's more than one option for them to get out.
I believe there's a curb where that property line is, right? So the people from that three-story building can't, well, they could drive across the curb, I suppose, if they wanted to, but otherwise, they will be going out within that property.
Sure, sure.
I'm pretty sure there is.
And when you talk about the continuing on, you talk about continuing to the south towards C2, I believe, behind the buildings?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. I did notice that.
So they can go behind that, and our clubhouse is almost to the end, and the entrance to it is actually that way. So people could go either way.
So on just the currently available aerial photography, it appears that the next exit to the south is all the way to the south of the southernmost building in that area?
It is, it is.
C2, yeah.
That's also interesting to note that so far, even though we're 97% occupied with 63 apartments at these three buildings, only 40% of the underground parking is being utilized. So it'd be easy to try to keep those full by utilizing the tenants who want underground parking by just, you know, give them a?
You just have to figure out an underground connection between the buildings.
Maybe a clicker to open the door.
Or an umbrella, or an umbrella to carry.
There you go.
All right. Does council have any other questions for the applicant while they're? Anything else that you wanted to say in support of your application while we've got you here?
Is there an architect right here?
Yeah.
No, other than that we meet all the other criteria for design for it, and yes, we're just asking for a slight increase in density because we can accommodate that. And then, yes, the exit here also extends around that building as well.
Okay. Oh, yeah, if you could just say your name.
Oh, I'm Matt Faber.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And there is parking down here also. Like I said, the clubhouse is back here, so there'd be some traffic that would be going there anyway.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you for being here this evening, and I know we rescheduled or scheduled out a little bit to accommodate everybody being able to be here to answer questions, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll double-check if there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening. We do want to avail folks of that opportunity. We do have a fairly sparse crowd here this evening, so it doesn't appear that there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item. Mr. Lloyd, if you want to come back up in case there are any questions that we come up with here at the last moment. But otherwise, we have the request before us to adopt the resolution, which is the attachment C or three in the packet here, which would approve the conditional use with the condition added regarding the pathway easement on the west side.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Bauer to approve that resolution, approving the conditional use as outlined with the condition as noted. Councilmember Schroeder is the maker of the motion to the motion.
I also wanted to say that the Planning Commission looked at this, and I read the minutes, and they looked like they had a thorough conversation about a number of things and that they voted on it, and so I feel comfortable supporting it.
All right. And as the secondary councilmember Bauer?
Yes. I didn't watch the video of the Planning Commission and will support that as well, that it was a very good discussion and definitely impacted, good discussion. Definitely discussed many different areas and aspects I thought were important.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Groff?
I just think this will be an addition that is needed in our housing in Roseville. I mean, as she mentioned, the two-bath, two-bedroom layout is very popular and much in demand with rental. And I realize this is market rental, but we've been doing a variety of different types of affordability, so I think this fills another gap that we need.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Strong?
I think that as long as the, it looks like it's clearly outlined in what was passed by the Planning Commission, that the expectations on screening and landscaping to serve as buffers for the neighborhood are maintained and upheld, that I think that it would be less of an impact on those adjacent to the area, possibly providing more screening from Snelling Avenue now than they have now.
If there's no other discussion, I would just add that I agree with much of what has been said and certainly with the support from the Planning Commission. I think we've got very robust standards as to screening and that sort of thing, and actually, it will be an improvement on what's there now, so that'll be helpful. And I do want to recognize and note some of the comment from the testifiers at the Planning Commission in regards to certain maintenance issues, et cetera, with the existing properties that are not part of this consideration. Two things about that. One is that I think the council is probably rightly limited in how much, if at all, we can really take that into account as part of our consideration of an approval of an application with respect to this property. But at the same time, I think both at that hearing as well as, so we can repeat it now, we do encourage the owner to work with the city staff on any issues that have been identified and make sure that we do have those come into compliance because that's important for the neighborhood. And I think it'd be of benefit to the property owner as well, certainly, in the long run. And with that, I will be supportive as well of this resolution. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve the resolution approving this conditional use as outlined. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously and that approval is granted. Thank you again to the applicant and wish you best of luck on the project and low vacancy rates into the future. With that, that brings us to the end of our business items this evening. We don't have any council initiated items or council minutes. The only thing remaining, other than future agenda review, is our brief consent agenda. I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgen to introduce our consent items this evening.
In the control room, could I have a computer screen, please? All right. As mentioned, Mr. Mayor, only two items, so this will be really quick. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $750,240.62. And Agenda Item 10B approves the purchase of two dehumidification units, the skating center as planned for, and the 2025 capital improvement budget, and the hiring of a contractor to do centerline painting as part of our annual contractual pavement painting. And that is the consent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strong. Discussion on the motion for the consent items?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. And then, as mentioned before, the future agenda review. Once again, back to Mr. Trudgen.
Yes, we have a meeting next Monday, and we have a couple proclamations. We'll also have a public hearing for certification of unpaid utility bills, which we do on a pretty regular basis. We also will have consideration of a clear channel agreement regarding the use of digital displays as far as having city messages on there. We do have a number of alcohol and tobacco compliance failures, so that'll be the bulk of that evening. On June 2nd, we will have the consideration of the ethics complaint. I would mention that this coming Wednesday, the Ethics Commission will be meeting to consider that complaint. Also have the County Road B assessment hearing, and also receive a report from BKV regarding the civic campus master plan. Then on the 16th, we'll be bringing back the consideration of the Albin right-of-way vacation. We'll have a joint meeting with the Finance Commission and kind of kick off some very early budget conversations and really take a look at the property tax base. Need legislative changes, as you read in the paper today, they're scrambling again to meet the deadlines, and we'll see if they're in special session. So that might still be too early to really understand what landscaping looks like, but also need budget goals in the July meetings. I would note, in reading that article, I don't have any information beyond that, but it does seem some of that housing legislation is kind of dead on arrival. They just can't come to any firm conclusions. So would not expect that to be passed at least this session, but I'm sure it's going to come back.
Right. And probably dead on arrival is not the right description for it, but dead as of this point.
As of this point.
It seemed like there was a pretty, pretty strong effort to try to get it passed, but it seemed like in committee that it sort of started to founder. So I did remember in that article, they talked about that it would be most likely coming back in a future year, depending on what ends up in any omnibus bill that might happen. So stay tuned, but appreciate that update. appreciate that update. Are there questions from councilmembers on the future agenda? Councilmember Strong.
Can we add Rosefest to the agenda for June, just so we all keep that in mind because we are?
To the list of meetings, essentially?
To the list of meetings, yeah.
Sure, sure.
We do have that, that really, really complicated meeting at the end of June where we all sit in the back of a pickup truck.
Or we walk.
Which has to be noticed.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'll bet next time.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments on the future agenda?
Wondering if in, sometime in the future, we could add the streetlight policy because I'm getting a lot of calls on that, and I would like the councils to have a discussion on that.
Councilmember Graff, is there, I know we talked about it a little bit offline, but is there a certain thing you want us to come back with? Because the council did adopt that policy, you just want to have a refresher and conversation?
Are there certain aspects that need to change?
Yeah, well, perhaps. I mean, the feedback I'm getting is that the people don't want them, and so I want to know whether we're going to require them where it's recommended or not, and whether there is any, I think the public wants to know what the policy is and how they can work with that, so that's what I'm hearing.
Maybe informational update.
They're also thinking that with the finances, the way they are, is our streetlights really where we should be putting that amount of money at this time, since no one wants them on the blocks, that I'm hearing from anyway.
Right, we'll note that. And that would be, so I believe unless the council objects or suggests otherwise, that would be under our normal councilmember-initiated item.
Correct.
However, that would be at the next meeting for consideration by the council as to whether it goes on a future agenda.
Yes.
Unless the council wants it to be just put on an agenda, that's an option the council has at this time. Bring it back under the normal policy?
Yes.
Seems that way, all right. Very good. Other reports, announcements, questions on the future agenda or councilmember-initiated items for future meetings? Councilmember Strong.
I just had a question about, did we come to a final decision on the massage therapy? Are we bringing that back at some point soon?
Yeah, we'll be bringing that back, yeah.
Oh, it's just not on the docket, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Further out into the future, all right. If there's nothing else, then I think the only other item on our agenda this evening is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, second by Councilmember Bauer to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We adjourned at 7:11 PM. Thank you, everyone.